Okay, we're going to start the meeting on September 6th, 2022. It's about 6:02 PM. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
Summer Madison, position one.
Chip Bradley, position two.
Sergio Martinez, position three.
B. D. Canner, position four.
Natalie Gilbreth, position five.
Thank you. Tammy Kaufman, Mayor. And we have Administrator Fritz. Lieutenant Magano with us. And the planning commission we have.
Cindy Myers.
Thank you. Now, remind everybody to use your gymnasium voice and project because we still don't have microphones in here, correct?
Um, I, uh, yes. Our order.
No problem. Gymnasium voice, we like to practice. Or outside voice, for those who can use the outdoor microphone.
And Mr. Chabante had called and said that he had a Fair Board meeting and they were short of quorum, so he had to go to that meeting.
Okay. Okay, we were testing out the closed captioning tonight, and Ms. Curtis said that she was unable to do it. It's supposed to be the three dots on the bottom right. There should be an option to enable live transcript, and the caption should show on screen. So maybe he's going to try that. If not, we'll try again next month. Okay. Maybe over for the next item. I have proclamations first item. And the first point is September is suicide awareness prevention, whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religious background. And whereas suicide is a major public health issue that requires vigilant attention and preventative action, especially during times of pandemic. And whereas 45,979 people lost their lives to suicide in 2020, including 833 Oregonians. Suicide is the ninth leading cause of death for Oregonians, which ranks Oregon in the 13th highest suicide rate in the nation. Whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death for ages 15 to 44-year-old Oregonians in 2020. Whereas each death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, loved ones, and by the extension of our entire rural community. And whereas research shows that 95% of adults would do something if someone close to them was thinking about suicide if they only knew what to say or do. Now, therefore, I, Tammy Kaufman, Mayor of the City of Gold Beach, hereby declare and proclaim the month of September 2022 a suicide awareness and prevention action month for the City of Gold Beach. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city council encourage all citizens to learn the warning signs, trust their gut, and use that information to ask a troubled friend, colleague, or family member, "Are you okay?", and be prepared to listen. That conversation could change a life. And there is a suicide crisis line attached in our packet, and the text option is still very popular, I understand. I think Mr. Clay will probably talk a little bit about that. I'll save that for him. And the next proclamation is October as Bully Prevention Month, whereas bullying is a physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional intimidation to harm intentionally directed at a person or group of people that occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, on the job, and through some technology. And whereas research indicates that bullying is the most common form of violence annually affecting thousands of Oregon children and adolescents. Whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems. And whereas children who are bullied are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors, while children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now, therefore, I, Tammy Kaufman, Mayor of the City of Gold Beach, hereby declare and proclaim the month of October 2022 as Bully Prevention Month for the City of Gold Beach. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city council encourage all schools, students, parents, recreational programs, religious institutions, community businesses, and organizations become engaged in a variety of awarenesses and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer. All children, adolescents, and adults, starting with supporting a friend who is getting bullied to move from being a bystander to becoming an upstander when they witness someone being bullied. Thank you. And did you want to speak, Mr.? Use your gymnasium voice.
I will. It's really good to see you all up in person. It's been two years, something like that. And I also love your app. It's just a phenomenal tool, so I think you'll enjoy it. For the record, my name is Gordon Clay from Brookings, Oregon. And I want to say that I want anybody that is aware of today's meeting to really look at the packet that is on about this meeting. It is incredible. It's got a lot of very valuable information on both topics. I would caution about 988. And I've got a lot of information on my website at zeroattempts.org/988.html. It is not working at this point in time for rural people. It is actually, in my opinion, and in the opinion of NPR and The Hill and Kaiser Family Foundation, that what's happening in rural America is that they have spread out from 160 call centers to local communities. And like Adapt is the local community here that has hardly gotten started on behavioral health in this county. They've replaced Curry Community Health. And what's happening is that a lot of calls are going directly to 911. And as we know, that is not the best place for somebody that is having a mental health problem. Also, I want to warn, I just want you to be aware, and I want the community to be aware, because you've got the national phone line, you've got the crisis text line, 741-741, which we're doing that with all the kids. And it's superb. They've had counselors working for years doing that counseling work. But what's happened with this spread out is they've gotten little operations like Adapt and handing it over to them. They're having to get counselors to be on call, and particularly for texting. And kids, Gen Z and Gen Alpha, or Gen Z and Alpha, don't call a crisis line. They text. They don't talk to anybody on the cell phone. They text. And the thing about the texting in the United States is that most of the text services do not use AI. So, and the crisis text line does. And that's a big difference for texting because youth use hundreds of emojis. They don't talk in words, they talk in emojis. And if you aren't a really up on it, you don't understand that. That's all crisis text line does, is work with that. They go with the assistance of AI. And in fact, when somebody goes on text 741-741, within 19 seconds, that computer has read that profile of that person and triaged it. And so it's gone, and it's, if it's really a crisis and they can tell, they've got really good data, it gets put up at the top. If not, and there's more important things here, it gets down lower. And the other thing about it is that everything that gets text to the counselor, and the counselor has a choice, immediately, within a few seconds, it comes back, AI comes back and tells them the next best question to ask. So this is data that is just, it's perfect. And something that, a couple of things that are really a problem with 988 right now, it's going to be better, but it's probably going to be at least two or three, maybe five years, because we don't have enough counselors in this whole county to take care of just the hotline, you know, much less the people that are in crisis. And two things have happened majorly, is that a lot of LGBT kids have been outed to their parents. That undermines them, and some kids have lost their home because of the beliefs that some people have about LGBT kids. And if you look at the family, or the new Oregon Student Health Survey that replaced the previous two surveys, in Curry County, eighth graders, less than, only 72.5% of Curry County eighth graders identified as heterosexual, as binary. The rest are in a mix. A few, about, I think 3%, don't know, but everybody else is identifying. And actually, there were more FAV, which is Female Assigned At Birth, that self-identified in Curry County as transsexual, transgender, and 0.4% of MAAVs, male assigned at birth, said that. So we've got a much bigger outing community, but Gen Z and Alpha, we know from Pew Research and all, that this is a very open group of kids. They are really tolerant and exploring, and they are learning about their sexuality at a much younger age. And you can't take the books out of the library because they've got it on the computer. And all they have to do is get access and really learn about what their feelings are and that kind of thing. So I want to just put that out, that learn before you call. And the other thing is that they are, there are too many people, the numbers have gone way up on the number of people since June 21st that have been incarcerated. And I don't know the word is it, you call it, but you're taken to the hospital and then against your will, you're held at the hospital. And it could be for two days, it could be for months. And that number has jumped up because the counselors just don't understand. They haven't worked with counseling over the phone and know what it's about. And in fact, in Oregon, it wasn't until a year ago that counselors, psychiatrists, therapists, or even required to have one hour of suicide training to get a, be licensed as a therapist or a psychologist. And today, this day, we require two hours in six years of information about suicidal addiction. So it's still not a safe place for people to go. I, oh, and I did want to say, this is suicide awareness and prevention month, and we've got 102 locations that this brochure and these cards are at. And I think there's probably around 30-some, actually more than that, here in Gold Beach. And that information is available at zeroattempts.org/curry.html. And you can find all the locations. And I just want to really encourage people to get a brochure. It tells you what to look for, what to see, what to notice of a good family member or something like that, and then what to do. And the card is something that you give to somebody that you're worried about and say, "Are you okay?" Not the normal greeting that you have with almost everybody you talk to. "How you doing? You're good. I'm good. Yeah, me too." Really ask, "Are you okay?" And it's okay to say you're not okay, particularly for men, to know that it's okay, guys, to say you're not okay. And take some time to talk. That conversation could save a life. And thank you, Mayor, for your support of both of these proclamations. Once again, we've been doing this for six, seven, eight years. And it's not going to stop until we stop and get to zero suicide. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'm glad that you write shorter ones than I do.
Well, they have one up in Fort Orford that was like four pages long. It didn't get read. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, a moment of silence to acknowledge Heather Iverson. I met Heather when she was a little girl, and her and her siblings would come to church on a regular basis. And I remember her being so beautiful as a little girl, 15 years, that she could have been a model. And then her life just didn't go the way that everybody would have liked. And I never knew how to help her. I mean, I feel terrible about that, and a lot of the community does, that there just wasn't any magic wand that we could lay and make her look better. And I know there's a lot of people still struggling today. So if we could just, uh, whatever. Thank you. Next is Anna Marie Curtis from the Gold Beach Main Streets. She's going to give us an update. I'll bet you she has an invite for everybody.
Hello, everybody. Anna Marie Curtis, Main Streets. Can you hear me, please? Sorry. I am working on getting a more consistent monthly update for you guys with a couple just key points that I can chat about every month. But for now, I do want to invite everybody to the city council meeting, sorry, the town hall meeting on September 12th, the next Monday. It's going to be at 5:00 PM, and that's going to be at the Curry Public Library. We're really excited. We did send out the survey to, we did every door and red mailer, so that went out to everybody in the 9744 floors in code, so hopefully everybody did get one of those. We have had really great responses for those surveys, and we're really excited to present those to you guys at the town hall meeting. I guess the only other real update we have is that we are doing our last round of benches here in the next couple of weeks. So you guys might have seen the concrete pads going out, but we have our last round of benches. Two will go at McKays, and that's in the mere end of the Napa across the street. We have a memorial bench going at the hospital, as well as one going at the Port Gold Beach. And then we have four benches going into the Pocket Park as well. And that will complete the design of the Pocket Park. And yeah, that's about it. We look forward to everybody coming to the town hall and hearing everybody's feedback, really great stuff that we got from the surveys, so I am very excited to be everybody. That's it.
So will that be a recorded event, a Zoom event, just live event?
It is going to be live. It will be recorded, so Curry Voices will be there to record, and that will go onto YouTube when it's available.
Okay. And I know Administrator Fritz has told me that she needs an attend, but I can not attend. Is anybody else available to attend, or council? So you got, which council is coming?
Yes, I'm excited. Thank you, guys, for supporting it, and I'm looking forward to the community's input and questions, concerns, all of that. It was going to be a great, great opportunity for discussion.
I'm sorry, I have to work.
That is okay. We will miss you, but it will be recorded.
Thank you.
That's all I have for this month. I will work on getting a more detailed report that will just be a consistent every month, and that'll go out into the packet. But for now, that's what I've got.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Okay, now we're going into the workshop for the planning commission for the housing advancement project. What I'd like to do tonight, if everybody's okay with it, is we'll start with one person and go around and try to attack the pages that you have concerns on, rather than go page by page, which would take forever. Just kind of what page are you concerned about? Let's talk about it, and then move on to the next. And it looks like the beginning of this council's here, who probably got maybe the most of the questions. You're probably the next one that has the most questions.
Can I start at page 31? There's a comment there asking if that makes sense to change it to article, to the, oh, not, what is the comment here? It seems adding the Conference of Plan MAP and the other Conference of Plan Amendment to the ordinance would be appropriate to me. So I didn't write any comments online. Page 33 is not any changes that I could see, but I had a question on the notice, section B, A, all owners of record of real property within a minimum of 250 feet.
What?
Uh, page 33, B procedures to A.
Do it.
So I agree, again, all owners of record of real property within a minimum of 250 feet of the subject site. For some reason, that's not matching in my head.
Okay. And then?
It's a, that's a, um, yeah, I mean, we can reword it, but the two.
No, I meant not the part in here, but just explain it to me.
It's a statutory, the ORS 197, it's a 238, it has to do with legal notice, because this is quasi judicial or something like that. And depending on if it's inside a city or inside a county, there's different noticing requirements. And actually, in a, in a city, it's only required to be 125 feet, but we've always noticed to 250, because 125 feet is really not that much. And so we've always doubled that. But statutorily, we're only required to notice within 125 feet. And the reason why it's the owners of real property, again, that has to do with the statutory requirements. We get our information from the assessment, the assessor's tax rules. And so I think the only time we notify non, like, we don't have any way to notify renters, but if it's in a mobile home park, we have to notify the, if somebody's going to affect a mobile home park, there is some ORS about notifying people within a mobile home park.
And then on that note, since I moved to this piece, if it's a minimum of 250 feet, how is it decided how much farther it goes out?
The, it goes from the exterior property line, so like properties in the middle here, so exterior, and it's 250 feet radius from the entire, so it's not like from where the structure is on the property. So like, if the property's like an acre, then it's 250 feet around that entire acre.
So it's about a city block?
Yeah.
Thanks. Um, page 46. Oh, that was another one that had a little change, section 21060. There's that change on number two, tying it back to the change in 28140. Again, it's not change code of the whole thing. Yes, and though language checks, a variance to the provisions of 28111 is permitted only as a last resort and is only considered necessary to allow reasonable economic use of the subject property. So that's probably a question for another day, breaking that down as to what a last resort might look like and what reasonable economic use would look like to balance out the enhancement of natural existence. That's a different question. Page 54, parking review, looks like type one, if that makes sense. That was a comment there. Page 56, I threw the first vote, so I get to say it tonight, because I had to say it at every meeting. On page 56 is the two spaces per dwelling unit. And I know that's been a lot of discussion, if we're doing one and a half or two, and I don't know that we made a formal vote on it, but we talked a lot about it, so I didn't know if that was going to come back up tonight.
So you're for the two spaces?
I am still wanting a magic answer. That's going to make one of people want people to come and build things, right? And that's what they were saying, the advisors were saying, that having lower than two would bring in investment, bring in builders, because it's cheaper to build, because you can build more and have less parking. But we've had very good arguments about the need for two spaces, especially with recreational vehicles. So I don't have a vote on that at the moment, but I just didn't know if we needed to bring it to some kind of discussion vote at some point tonight. And then page 64, there was a comment question about event for the curb plan unit development, about the type two or type three. And I looked back over at my notes from the meeting, and if they weren't clear, I want to say from my memory that it was dependent on the number of units.
I want to say that's what I remember, too. If it was, if it was like, I'll look at my notes, but I want to say like, you know, I'm throwing a number, like 10 and under, it would be this kind, but if it went over that amount, then it would be higher.
Yeah, I can find the numbers in my notes, and I don't think we voted on it. I don't know that that was determined. Page 66, it was just another question of type one, made sense, and it made sense to me. And then page, I can't see the patch, I have a question on page 25. No, I think that's a probably a question for later. That's it? Thank you.
Very good.
Mayor Kaufman, can I jump in? Can you hear me okay? This is Kate Rogers.
Oh, Kate, yes.
You can hear me?
I can. You can hear a lot. Where do you have the floor?
Okay, great. Hi, everybody. I haven't introduced myself yet. I'm Kate Rogers. I'm part of the consulting team with MIG, and I'm kind of filling in for Matt Hasty today, because he's on vacation right now. But I did want to respond to the parking question, the off-street parking ratio question, because I think there may be two versions of the draft code floating around right now. Because the version that I saw most recently was proposing to keep the two spaces per unit requirement for single-family dwellings, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, and townhouses in mobile homes. But it was proposing a potential reduction to 1.5 spaces per unit for cottage clusters and also for multifamily dwellings with only one bedroom, or studios or one-bedroom units. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, that that is kind of still currently part of what we proposed. And maybe the version that was included in this particular packet was an outdated version, or that part got cut out, I'm not sure, but.
I believe there were two different people in your office working on it, so that might be why you can first write.
That's right.
And we will talk about parking again, because we can never stop talking about it. Okay, Councilman Gilbert.
Yeah, I would be happy to hear if other folks have comments.
Um, so I do not have a single question right now. Okay. Ms. Myers, would you like to go next?
Sure. I have to admit that my personal life got in the way of me reading very much of this, but I did want to kind of go back to something that was said in last meeting that I never quite got resolved, and that is, so where does the stormwater ordinance or rules come into all of this? Because it seems like, and I'm probably addressing this to you, it seems like we're proposing some new kinds of impervious surfaces and potentially larger areas of impervious surface that are going to create some stormwater things to deal with. And so I don't know, I haven't been able to find anything about what the rules are for addressing stormwater.
And I need to, I think I said last time I was going to send it to you, and then I
And I need to, I think I said last time I was going to send it to you, and then I didn't, so I'm going to write myself a note to send it to you. The stormwater ordinance is separate, and it's based, the, it's tiered, it's based on the size of the development. So like, like, and I'm just going to throw this off the top of my head, I'm not saying this is what it is, but like zero to, to a thousand square feet, you have to do this. If it's over, I want to say if it's over five thousand square feet, then, then you're required to do an analysis, and you have to... So there's specific requirements, and it's based on how much is disturbed. And that's not necessarily impervious surface itself, it's site disturbance. So it has to do with erosion control and stormwater. So, so I'll send you that, and that, in my opinion, probably wouldn't change because, um, because it's like the new things that we're proposing, it still would be relevant on the square footage. So like if you're developing a lot and you're disturbing a thousand square feet, then those would still be applicable. If you're going to do like, we're talking about cottage clusters and stuff now, because the stormwater stuff doesn't really matter if you're building a single-family dwelling or a townhouse or whatever, it's just how much are you disturbing? And so depending on what you're building, you're still going to disturb X amount of square feet, so...
But once the initial building is over and the disturbance is done, you're still left with the impervious surfaces, which seems to me would impact what we're asking for in terms of landscaping and parking, those areas potentially being impervious.
Okay, so, um, I, because we don't have a lot of development, and we haven't for a while. I don't know it off the top of my head because it's been so long since I've really had to dive into it. There's, the last time I really had to dive into it was the Crooks Apartments up by the school, and that was a couple of years back. So let me, I'll send you the copy of it, and then I'll ask to review it and see if there's anything in there. And then you would probably want to be one of, be one of the best ones to like let us know like, hey, I think maybe we should add something here or whatever. Because it was adopted in, I want to say two thousand nine or two thousand ten, because we had to do it because of the wastewater plan. So probably good to have a look at it.
Nothing else, because I didn't have a chance to read it, sorry.
I do remember, there was conversation about, I don't know if requiring was the word, or promoting different types of driveways in one of the presentations, so having driveways that have not alternate solvents. So in one of the half packets, there was information about that. I think it was like promoting it, not requiring, I'm not sure, but to help with that. And then I don't remember seeing anything in that presentation about storage of runoff, but I...
Yeah, I guess I'm a lot more interested in what we're doing to prevent the runoff, not... I mean, obviously, the city has to deal with it, storage or route it to where it's going to go. But if we can do a better job of preventing, then, I mean, especially if we're building up slope of other vulnerable locations, people have homes in low spots that flood now, and so I just want to be sure we're addressing that.
Administrator Fritz, can you copy me on that email?
Absolutely. In fact, I, I'll, I'll send it to all of you. It's not very long, it's like five or six pages.
Thank you.
And then Mayor, I'll, I'll ask, um, can't remember Carolyn's last name. Thank you. I'll ask Ms. Johnson how they deal with it every Tuesday, because I'm sure she deals with it a lot, so...
Yes, and your public works superintendent probably deals with more runoff than us, so he might have input. Okay, we're around to Councilor Addison, remember you, Jim Weiss?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the first thing that I noticed that I appreciate is the fact that we're kind of streamlining and making things move quicker through this document with regards to giving a lot of the simpler decisions to the planning director, not necessarily the commission. I think that's going to make developers kind of happy. The other thing that I noticed, the city of Brookings currently just amended some ordinances for parking. And I think because they're having to implement that, it, it kind of makes the case for keeping the two parking spots per residents, so that we're not having to backfill. We're kind of mitigating that, so, so I think that's great. The only other thing is a typo on beach fifty-seven. I'm sorry. Under commercial development, see also section three point zero, three, four. Third box down on the very right, accommodation.
And you know how long that's been that way?
Oh, you want two lines there?
Yes, and then maybe a two, three boxes down a space between one and space.
Okay.
Ms. Rogers, did you catch that?
I was trying to, no, I didn't, I didn't catch it. Can you give me the...
This is not part of what you're changing, so it's...
Yeah, no, it's fine. It's just something that's been in our code forever, and she just now caught it.
What was the section number?
It was, uh, off-street parking, three point zero, three two.
So thank you, Councilor Madison, that's been that way since probably two thousand nine.
And we have, uh, under hotel motel on RV, accommodations spell run, and then down a couple of space, twelve boxes, there need to be a space between the number one and space. So we know that she read it very carefully.
Yeah, yeah, you get the price.
Read as in color. Anything else?
No, that's great.
Okay. Councilor Bryant?
Don't have any yet, but we have a chance to do more, so we can have a full adjustment.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Martinez?
I'm afraid I have no comments at this time, thank you though.
Okay. So the next question I have is, is the council ready to vote on this next month? Okay, during the first reading?
On the whole plan?
The whole, yeah, the ordinance at that point, correct?
Correct.
If, if you're not, if you really want a little bit more time, we could have a public hearing at the next meeting and then leave it open for like two weeks, which is really common in planning decisions, for people to give written comment, that would be a little bit more intentional, public comment, than when we do the first reading and passage in November, and then the second in December.
So when it stops raining, people that have a new code to develop or new ordinance to develop?
So, I mean, our goal was to get it done in September, we asked for an extra month, and so that's why we were going to do it in October. But it would be probably a little bit safer as far as trying not to get appealed if we went a little bit slower. Because the goal is to get this passed and no appeal, that everybody got heard, their comments were considered, we mixed it in with what was appropriate and input, and that the, the community is happy with what we came up with. And so that's, that's important because it's expensive to get appealed. Councilor Madison?
Well, if it's important, then I think maybe we consider kind of just doing a white paper or, or convince with the, the biggest changes and maybe reasons behind that so that we can onboard the support, in, in hopes and even maybe communicate, you know, our notice to have it adopted at the next meeting. And if we get any concerns or pushback from that, maybe that'll be just one of them.
Okay.
We've been at this for a while, so...
We have, and then I wanted to go over in two point zero, four, five, and Ms. Rogers, I'm going to be bugging you, and I don't know what page that is on, so I'm looking more rapidly to find it. Everybody flies it before me, let me know what page it's on.
I'm not sure, this is Kate, I'm not sure that section was included in the packet.
Actually, it's probably not, because...
Well, that's...
Because that wasn't the changes that were proposed this time.
Okay, so in two point zero, four, five, there is a minimum and maximum residential density. And Administrator Fritz, who's been very helpful in reviewing this and giving us good input, is concerned about the eight-minute units per net acre. And so I asked Administrator Fritz before the meeting, the minimum net density means eight units minimum per acre, and she said, no, that's not what it means. So, Ms. Rogers, what does that mean?
Uh, well, I mean, that's, that is generally consistent with my understanding that, I mean, if you had a one-acre property and you wanted to subdivide it into lots to build, you know, say, single-family homes, you would have to have at least eight units on that one-acre site to meet the minimum density. And that equates to roughly fifty-four hundred square feet per lot. So you could not have larger lots than that to meet the minimum density. You have smaller lots, but not larger lots. And then if you, if, if it were to apply to a multifamily development, it wouldn't be, you know, the size of the lots, but it would be, you know, how many, how many units you could fit on a property based on, or you could place on that property based on, the size of the property and the number of units.
Interesting, we took the minimum out of townhouses, multifamily dwellings, and parks, but we put it, kept it in the single-family dwelling. How many, um, it's actually not in the packet, it's in the last one packet. Do you want to hand us out a little bit, Councilor? It's, this is a, a comment, Administrator Cooper gave us, and I was sending email with this back in it. So how would the council feel about just removing the minimum net density for that section? Oh, Administrator Fritz here.
Yes.
Can you repeat the question, Mayor, please?
So, um, I'm, I'm sorry you can't see this, but in the section of minimum and maximum residential density in de-taxed, single-family units, manufactured buildings, tiny homes, duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes, if you were going to subdivide that, you'd have to do at least eight per acre. But in townhouses, we don't have a minimum.
And this is Kate again, I would just say that in general, the purpose of a minimum density standard is to just ensure that land is used efficiently, so that you're not having, you know, big chunks of land taken up by really large lots when they could be used more efficiently to have sort of more urban, urban development that is, you know, allowed by that zone. And, you know, I think in general, when land is developed, property owners, developers are tending to go more towards the maximum density allowable to make their development, you know, financially feasible. So in a lot of places, it's not as much of a concern. And, you know, I actually wasn't a part of all the discussions where that number was, was decided on, so I'm not sure the reasoning totally behind those, or certain housing types and others, but I understand that. Thank you.
So, just to clarify, when, um, for the, the minimum, it's like, what I was trying to say is, that's not what it meant, was that it's like, okay, if I'm going to develop my property, I have to build eight houses. I was saying that that's not what it's saying, that you have to build eight houses. But subdividing, yeah, and what, what Ms. Rogers was saying about, yeah, because right now, our minimum lot size is, is four thousand square feet. So obviously, we don't, you know, the idea is if, if the terrain will allow it, because again, it's going to be by, constrained by what's available. So a flat lot could, could have that, but if you have a lot like that up on Tom Cat Hill, probably not going to be able to have a fifty, six hundred square foot lot.
Which was my original question, is do we have an exception for lots that you just can't do that? My acre and three is the most you could ever get on there. If we leave this eight per net acre, I think, I think it means that has, literally, it has to be eight per acre.
Well, there is a reference to what net acre means, and, um, and it does talk about environmentally constrained lands. So topography features with slopes greater than, so yes, it does, it does have a provision for and explains what net acreage is. So yeah, so if you have a vertical lot that goats are going to live on, you're probably not going to get five thousand square foot lots, and you don't have to.
So, Mr. Cooper, I'm going to push a lot of you to talk to me, because I'm arguing your point, and you may want to make your own point.
So I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Good evening, everybody, good to finally see you for a while. Regarding the two dot oh, four, five, my concern is at this point, less for the developer, because the developer is going to turn to the market and say, market, how should I develop this in order to appease you? Because once I satisfy you, Mr. or Miss Market, I know I'm going to be able to maximize my investment. The minimum will not impact the developer. Now, if we were to say the maximum is eight per acre, then you'd probably have a bunch of developer pride games. They would be wringing their clothes, their hearts out, because they would feel impetuous. So what I want you to do is I want you to focus on the concerns of the owner. And this could be an owner of a quarter acre, a half acre, a full acre, and their aspiration is to develop a family compound. And in a situation like that, it could be that it's just a really wonderful, large family with young children. And so they want to take an old piece of property on their acre or half acre and turn that into a family compound, maybe it's three thousand, maybe it's forty-five hundred square feet, whatever, their heart desires or the aspirations of their mind at that time, they ought to be able to do what they want to do with their property. By establishing a minimum in the fashion that it's created here, you are attacking owner rights. You're not doing developers any better. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll pick your other one up in a second here. So I'm going to do a round robin with the council, we'll start with Councilor Skinner. Are you okay with the eight minimum, or do you want a different number, or do you just want to put it in A?
Thinking about what the goals are in the half process of increasing housing availability, my initial reaction is keeping the eight units per net acre. But Administrator Cooper's question about family exceptions, how that might work, that's an interesting question that I don't have the answer to, and that's the thing that makes me hesitate a little bit. I could see a family wanting to put something else up, and if they have an acre, are they going to be required to put a seven unit? But with the intent of increasing housing and what the market might, what you can get, we all know what you can, what the market will give you for property here, and what we're really looking at is finding that middle income housing. And so the market won't necessarily give us that. So I think this half plan and these minimum densities is an attempt to get what we need in the community for affordable housing, workforce housing. So I am not, um, not in favor of eliminating it, but I would consider lowering the number at this point. Thank you for sharing and bringing up the concern, Mr. Cooper.
Okay, Councilor Gilbert?
I can see Mr. Cooper has an excellent point in that we're kind of stepping on owners' rights here by, by setting a specific number, saying you must have at least eight per acre. There are some owners who are going to say, well, wait a minute. I'm an individual owner, and I want to build a home for my extended family, and I want it to be a nice big house, and I want everybody to have plenty of property. And now I can't do that, because I have to now put eight units on the acre. I can see a lot of pushback for that. I guess I have a lot of problems with any agency or entity saying you must to somebody who owns the property. And I'm not sure what to do about that, I'm not sure how to meet our density needs. I think that there are enough property owners who are going to be more than happy to put a... eight at least units on their acre in order to maximize their return on the use of that acre. But I still hesitate to, to tell everybody you must. You know, I think we can strongly suggest a minimum of eight and make allowance for exceptions. Just not sure if you have the right to stand and say you will.
Ms. Rogers.
I'm going to tie on what Ms. McGilchrist said. I feel like maybe making a recommendation to say this is consistent with the goals, but, you know, there's other situations, besides having a large family, there's somebody that wants to have a truck farm. I mean, I don't know if you can have a large garden and, on an acre inside a residential area, but I think you can, and that could be a benefit for the community. So there could be a wide variety of things that somebody wanted to do with their acre. And, and I feel like, um, it's kind of like that, uh, law or regulation that was passed a few years back that tried to change the county, or what was allowed on county property, and they said, "That's, that's taking the rights." And I think that, um, I just, I just feel like it's, it's a worthy goal, but I just don't know that you want to tell somebody about.
Counselor Rass.
Well, I, I think Mr. Cooper for bringing this to the forefront, because I, I agree. I could see an encouragement where this might be more applicable, and maybe, you know, maybe the, maybe it would be fashioned a little different, but there are so many circumstances we're probably not even thinking of that, that could affect that. There are some larger properties in the city limits that, for instance, have power lines going through portions of the acreage, whereas they wouldn't be able to meet the requirements of eight, but could still develop housing as opposed to nothing at all. So, encouraged and supported, yes, but I don't think maybe we should be requiring that. We are rural, so and, and I think despite needing housing, we still want to feel rural, which means we don't have neighbors, you know, fight, eat, each other's windows.
Counselor Reddick.
Not comfortable stepping on old property rights.
Counselor Martinez.
Uh, yeah, I think a minimum kind of opens us up to appeal. Certainly, there's going to be situations where that just may not be feasible, and maybe opening up ourselves up to, oh, a lot of paperwork, a lot of, uh, difficult situations. It does force one, however, a minimum, it does force one to acknowledge the fact that we are trying to build housing that is, we call it affordable. We are trying to support the average working person here in, in a community. And so, we may have to eschew these ideas of, of keeping things rural when we need, because we are definitely rural outside of our city limits, absolutely within the city limits, but within the city limits, we are technically a city. It's just more, um, it's more economically feasible to, uh, to create dense housing within the city, because it's just, it creates a, a larger tax block in the smaller amount of, of land. I can understand how the number eight, eight units per acre, I can understand why people would push back against that. I, I would love to see, I wish I could see drawings or some sort of, uh, physical representation, some sort of a design brought, uh, brought up to, to help flesh out that idea a little better. But, yeah, I think we're opening up ourselves to some major pushback if we start saying you, this is the minimum. And at the same time, I, I am trying to remember that it's, we are focusing on maximizing our value in our land as a city, and while also supporting, uh, our workforce, it's...
Katie Hesler.
I don't have an easy answer, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rogers of the T-Dax, when I did read the comment regarding Mr. or Counselor Martinez, I just did some math, and where I used to live, where you live, you know, in the state which is a park, it's four acres and then 19 units, that's 9,000 square foot each. But by the time you put the roads in and it's a terrace, it, you, it's not that many per acre. So maybe because we don't have any flat ground, maybe we are being ahead of the law. So, Ms. Rogers, your answer.
Thanks, I just wanted to offer one potential solution, which is, some, a lot of cities that have minimum density requirements only apply then in the case of the subdivision, which is creating four or more lots or multifamily development. So if you're just developing your property, you just want to build a bigger house or, you know, accommodate your family, then you would be exempted from that minimum density. Or even if you were just partitioning your lot into only two or three smaller lots, you wouldn't have to meet that minimum density. So, that's one potential approach to still, if someone is, is doing a larger development, they would have to meet those minimum standards, but otherwise, not.
Chief one.
Uh, Mayor, I might be the only person in the room that's actively in the process of developing property that I'm partitioning and dividing, and there's a, there's things that go beyond this that Administrator Fritz and Panopagano are teaching me daily that be, that tie into all this and make it so much more complicated, such as frontage requirements and other things to get that smaller. But I am, I'm trying to get 12 units onto 1.54 acres, and I'm going to do as hard, as much as I can, but I may not, I may only be able to get 10, because par, half of that acre, half of an acre is fill material, and in order, it's so cost prohibitive to do an engineered compaction on that and build on it, and it's going to be useful for stormwater abatement, that I feel a minimum would, from a developer's standpoint, that lord knows I'm going to do everything I can to be as, as many houses on there as possible, but minimums could definitely scare me away if I was coming in from the outside trying to consider potential costs.
Okay. Reading the council, Ms. Rogers, they got, and I saw lots of, of happy eyes with your suggestion. So could you have Mr. Hasty include that on our dispersion and highlight it so we know it's not.
Sure. Sure. So limiting it to subdivisions and multifamily?
Yeah.
I have a quick question, just related to what you said about fill. Is that included in the net acreage, then?
There's a definition for the net acreage on the second page of that thing I gave you, it talks about what net acreage means. I don't know if that answers your question, though.
If that land is like hazard, and if you have land, if you have land sink, but I believe that's.
Yeah, I believe that that would be considered in the net, that's in that acreage.
Doesn't look like it excludes it, so that would, that would turn the volume, or depending on your situation.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Rogers.
Could we consider six instead of eight? And then, um, on these, these would all be type... So the question comes in back to the type, so depending on the number of units would determine how much review and conversation would go around each development, and the there are ways you can give grace to people. There are, I just read it today, in the higher level review process is... Ms. Rogers, do you know that in the higher level review numbers, there are things that the council or can, um, can do to give grace to developers? Like, these are all the rules, but in a hearing, does anybody remember this from reading it today?
Um, I'm not 100% sure what you're referring to, but a, a type three procedure would be required for any, any development of 20 or more residential units, so that we have, you know, larger subdivision. And, you know, a type three is a discretionary review process, so the decision maker does have some discretion to, you know, modify things potentially, I mean, based on, or depending on what the approval criteria are. There's also the planned unit development option, which has more flexibility baked into it. But, yeah, but beyond that, I'm not sure specifically what you're referring to.
We, we're going to look at it again next month, so it might be one of the things we adjust that night. And then the other question Mr. Cooper had is also on the T-Dax stuff, but it's, the city's effort to allow 65 to 75% of lot coverage has potential to negatively impact all the improvements for decades, and implementing those maximum lot cover standards, actually, leaders are both incentivizing, preparing the backward development, or our charms fall down. It is something that resembles a life, I'm not going to continue. And I believe that we're not changing, is that correct? That we can already build on 65 to 75% of our lots now, right?
Can you run the question by me again? I'm sorry.
He's concerned that, that people can build on 65 to 75% of the land now, or, or in with this new ordinance, but I think we can now, because the setbacks are very small. Rarely does anybody put that much on their, their property.
Right, our setbacks right now are five, five and 10.
Yeah, okay, so I don't think that's a change, but we can double check that before the next meeting. And then, Mr. Cooper, do you have anything else to add tonight?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Regarding the, uh, the density on the lots, a lot coverage, the, the fact that it is a legacy ratio carried by the city for some amount of time has little bearing in my considerations. We're about trying to optimize at this point, and you're changing all kinds of legacy codes. So, I'm pointing out that this is a legacy matter, it needs to be viewed in order to enhance the quality of life for Gold Beach. We are incentivizing developers, we've got one there in the room, we all love him, but he's going to build as much as he can on an acre of land unless somebody puts a collar around the opportunity to build, and one of the ways we do that is by designating how much coverage there's going to be. And at this point, our community has our rear ends hanging out for developers to perceive that they're now being incentivized to clutter up our city. We may need housing, but we don't need life.
Thank you. Counselor Skinner.
On the question of life, that did come up with the menu of choices that developers are permitted to use in the plan that we were presented with at a previous meeting, they had the sketch, the sketches, and there was the, like, if you're going to build a multi-unit dwelling, it must include, I don't know what it was, like, eight of these 12 features to make it look more like community and less of that. I guess I don't have your definition of life, but to me, that's just kind of rectangular concrete, like, let's get as many pieces on the property as we can. So that made me feel a little bit more comfortable with that, with the larger unit.
Okay. All right, so we should talk, probably look at that again next month, what is actually in the packet? She has a good incredible memory, then, too. All right, is there anybody else in the audience that wanted to speak on our Housing Assistance Plan or Action Plan and the zoning changes? See if anybody submitted something, but I don't want anyone to move out. Okay. And then, city councilors and Counselor Martinez, you can pick this up here, we have this new map that's going to go with this, and, uh, is these online to you, Jody?
Pardon?
Are these online, Jody?
Uh, well, they're part of the packet, so, so you can zoom in. These are pages 77 through, um, 81. And the reason why the current map was included, so is that everyone could see that neural change. All we're doing is making a color.
I had a question about the map. Was there a reason for not merging the boundaries? So, in other words, what, what are, what's the point of having the boundaries between the, the sections if we are merging it?
Merging what do you mean?
Well, so, for example...
Like, you mean thick lines?
The lines.
That's because I was drawing it, and the, um, I had to draw with my mouse, and so I couldn't do, like, whole sections, so, yeah.
So you weren't, like, doing a GIS process?
Well, they tried that, but the problem is that the zoning layer for Gold Beach is grossly incorrect on the GIS, but it's not our data, so I have no way to fix that. So, um, so I physically had to go in and create this map.
Just seems like that question's going to come up, maybe by more people than me, and it might be nice to have just a...
Well, what I'm hoping is that I can send this to, um, ElCog is the one that, they don't have the data, but they're, they are the ones that are in charge of the GIS, that I can send them this, and then they can do that, because I don't have the ability to see the entire thing where they would. But when we got the map, and it wasn't anything that, that MIG did, it was just, they just pulled this stuff off of there, and it's like, yeah, that's not going to work, that's wrong. So, um, so then I had to go in and just hand through the map, so. So my hope is that we can have ElCog, I will send them these files, because I save these layers and say, "Can you make this as one whole block instead of my little old lines?" But good question.
Anything else on this particular section?
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I do forget about the ATU size on page, I came up last meeting, Joe. On page 60? Yeah, it still says 200 to 600 square feet.
Oh, we need to fix that.
Now, that may, that may have, have been changed, because this, there's two different documents, so I think, once the zoning one is merged with the procedures one, it will, but I will verify that.
What did we decide on, was it 1,000? Or was it 850?
I thought it was 850.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I'm wondering if this sort of sustainable changes that we consider this meeting, maybe we do two areas, two offices.
Do you really, are you, sorry?
I'm wondering what's some of the, um, changes that we're suggesting, and I think we made sure that we got it right, maybe we do, um, a lot of survey or...
Communication.
Okay, just to say, but I think that's a great, good pressure into the nice big copy that we're doing.
Ms. Rogers? Do you think it would be possible for your team to have the completed document with all the changes to us in two or so weeks, so the council can get it early, the public can get it early, and, and have several weeks to read it?
Yes, I think so, and I thought that we had done that, merging of, of documents, so I'm not sure what happened in the translation to the packet, but we will make sure to fix it on our end, and we'll check on the quality of, you know, the officials.
And then we could put that on our website?
Correct.
And let everybody know that it's available, and that'll give everybody a chance to read all the red, the red will be what we change, and, right, red is change. When you, when we're looking at the document, we don't have to read the black, we don't have to read the...
Correct. Correct, correct, that's why it's color coded.
Okay. So that saves a lot of reading.
At the risk of making more work for Jody, I like Summer's idea about making a summary paper also.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Hasty's actually working on that.
I was going to say, yeah, it wouldn't be me that's there going to actually.
I'm sorry, yeah.
But thank you, thank you for sparing me.
That was in our last work session that he agreed to do that, right?
Yeah, yep.
Catherine. But no, he did agree to that, right? Okay.
I think he's looking at how to promote that to get people to read it.
Make sure people know what we're doing and everybody's on the same page because they're going to be surprised. We've been working on this for years.
Well, and we can add it to the FAQ document that was already put together. That can be just all merged in. Because after the letter that went out, I believe it was Ms. Johnson that did the FAQ sheet to kind of answer all the things.
Yeah, and we're lucky because we are a small town, we get a choice. Anybody over 10,000 people are required to do this. So we're not really going to be the most attractive city to put in what Mr. Cooper calls light because every city over 10,000 is going to have the minimums required. So we're actually going to be the variety, spicy variety people because we're going to have options. For people who don't want to just go cookie cutters.
Spicy variety.
Yeah, I've always been, yeah. So with that, if there's nothing else, let's take a break and come back at 7:55. And the next item is resolutions. And the first one has to do with funding for our water project. I will let Mr. Britz introduce.
Okay, so if you will recall recently, I can't remember exactly the month, but recently we had to go back to the state IFA, the Infrastructure Finance Authority, to bump up our loan for the water project because of all of the extra costs and stuff associated with the pandemic. So Mr. Newdahl and I and the mayor, that was held virtually in June. They all, they had a lot of questions for us, but they were all good questions. But they agreed to bump our loan up, it actually slightly better terms. If we do certain things, they'll forgive stuff. But basically, the resolution tonight is the first loan that we had originally been approved at $4 million. It's now been bumped up to 5.4. We just have to adopt that resolution, and that's from them. So like, I didn't write this resolution, this is from them. And it's a requirement of our law.
5.950.
Page 80 there.
You said 5.4.
I, that's what I said, I'm talking my head, I remember, but yeah.
We're on the same price.
Yep.
Oh.
Yes.
It's the map down there, that with that 5,000, 530,000 eligible for principal forgiveness, that brings it down to 5.4.
Okay.
There you go.
I knew that was sticking in my head, thank you. So anyway, they wrote the resolution, we just have to adopt it.
Okay, are there any questions? Here it is, may I get a motion? There's a sample motion if you would like to use it. I made each speaker.
I make a motion that council adopt resolution R2223-01, a resolution of the city of Gold Beach authorizing a new loan, a safe drinking on the loan fund by entering into a financing contract with the Oregon Infrastructure Finance Authority, otherwise known as IFA, and repealing, resolution R1920-07.
Is there a second?
One second.
So we have a motion from Council Madison, a second from Council Skinner. Is there any discussion? Here it is, I will call a question and start with Council Skinner.
Aye.
Council McGilvery.
Aye.
Council Madison.
Aye.
Council Bradley.
Aye.
Council Martinez.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0. Our next item is the penalty resolution, and I will let the administrator introduce that one as well.
Okay, this is a housekeeping item from our legal counsel. This kind of relates to some stuff that we've been working on for the past year. She noted that we did not actually have a penalty ordinance for this particular thing. So she, her and, or her, our legal counsel, they're the ones, again, I didn't write this, they wrote it. So we are just adopting what they sent us, and they recommend that we do this based on dangerous building stuff.
Any questions? Then I will ask her a motion.
I'll make the motion. I make the motion. There it is. I make the motion that the council adopt resolution R2223-02, a resolution adopting the maximum amount of penalty that may be imposed for offense pursuant to section 5.398 of the City of Gold Beach nuisance and offense code, allowing for future city council amendments to the penalty amount and repealing any conflicting provisions of previous resolutions.
Is there a second?
No second.
A motion by Council Madison and a second by Council Bradley. Is there any discussion?
My only question was, and I'm bypassing it the way it is, but in the future, the 500 per offense as a maximum, which is being low for a dangerous building.
But the per offense is per day?
It's per day, that was actually in my notes. What was that time period? Thank you. I should have asked that question.
Okay, any other discussion items? Okay, other question, Council Skinner.
Aye.
Council McGilvery.
Aye.
Council Madison.
Aye.
Council Bradley.
Aye.
Council Martinez.
Aye.
5 to 0. Okay, we are now with request to address the council and citizen comments, and we have a couple of them. If you wanted to speak in this section and you didn't do it yet, please follow along as we perform them back. And so citizen comment portion of the agenda is the opportunity for the council to listen to citizens, but not for dialogue. Citizens are allowed up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city not otherwise listed on that agenda item. The topic issue brought up may be referred by the council or to this administrator for inclusion on the subsequent council agenda. Please note that complaints should first be addressed to the appropriate city department or the city administrator prior to directly addressing the council. And Mr. Falls.
Hello, how's everybody doing? Today, I want to talk to you just for a few minutes about the project turnkey and the proposal for being made to buy a motel of some type in the Gold Beach area. I honestly don't think this town has the infrastructure to be able to handle something of that magnitude. We have a part-time police department, we have volunteer fire department. You know, these things create a lot of extra drama coming from a large city. I've seen it firsthand many times. There's a huge fire risk, the police response goes way up and so forth. I know that the proposal being made is being labeled a certain way, but I am concerned once the money is approved that it'll be used for whatever purpose they decide to use it for. And that would make it where we would now just becoming a homeless shelter, basically. And this area cannot handle that type of, that type of infrastructure. What are they going to do once they hit the 94? How are they going to provide transportation? How are they going to provide medical? How are they going to do all the other things that come into play with something of that magnitude? The proposal, I've read, they're asking for $10 million. And for the number of units they're talking about, that averages out over $200,000 per unit. I mean, I will just buy houses for them at that rate. I'm also opposed to the Motel 6, in the fact that its location is terrible for the people living around it. You're dealing with a facility that's at the bottom of a steep hill. And if there was ever a fire, I can tell you homeless encampments, homeless shelters have a huge problem with, especially the motels, with fires. It could literally go right up that mountain, take out every neighbor of that facility. And potentially with the way the wind blows up here, take the whole town out. And we all know that that does happen. You know, we just last week, there was a huge fire. And of course, over in Ashland and Talon, we know about that fire a couple of years ago. It's just not a safe spot. And I realize you guys don't have any direct say-so on this, but I would like to see you guys come out as a group and say, we're not in favor of it to the people that are going to approve or deny the money. We're sitting here right now in a position where, like I said, I know your hands are theoretically tied, but staying neutral is almost the same as saying yes. And I realize that there's ongoing issues with the homeless as far as if something has to be done and so forth and so on. I do not think this is it. And I strongly hope that you're all soon upon this. Gold Beach in general, I don't think it has a huge homeless problem, I really don't. I see the problem as a transit problem. It's people coming and going, passing through, and you know, they get a meal and they stay, and they get another meal and they stay a day longer. And if you really get down to the nuts and bolts, the people that have lived here, the people that have family here and so forth, I think you're talking a very small number. And you know, and maybe something to be done to address those individuals. But many of them have made the decision that they do not want to live under society's rules. And even their families have given up, saying, hey, you know, enough is enough is enough. And they're perfectly happy just, you know, laying in the street, basically. It's not something that I tolerate, that I feel tolerable to live, but I mean, it is reality. And so, like I said, my thing is, I'd like to see the city council come and say, no, this is not a good idea here. And the reason being that it's not safe. It's not safe for them, and it's not safe for us. And you know, they're going to do what they're going to do. I've sent several emails in the.
Trying to wrap up.
Okay. I've sent several emails to Megan Loeb there in Portland that's in charge of this thing. I don't think she really cares or listens to what people have to say. Maybe as a city council, they might be good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the next one is Mr. Russell.
Hi, thanks for your time. I've only been in Gold Beach for three years, so I don't know everything that's going on. I haven't noticed a huge homeless problem. Maybe I'm not looking hard enough, but I do understand that homeless people need help. And if you don't do something, the town that I used to live in, it just snowballs into a huge problem. What I, what I just want the city council to know is that I'm concerned about the homeless problem. I don't know if the Motel 6 proposal, which may or may not even be a real proposal, I'm still trying to figure that out, that's a great spot. I live at that end of town, and I cross frequently, cross the street there on my bicycle. It was that night drive. It's kind of difficult, and there's no real sidewalks to get from there to downtown. If I could have my wish, what I'd like to see is that Candle Factory building. I think that would be a great spot to build something similar to what the town that I used to live in is doing. I know they have a lot more tax base. It wouldn't have to be that big based on the number of people here that have a need for a place like that. And what they did is they built a three-story building. The first story was for people that were passing through or didn't need a permanent place, but they needed somewhere to get out of the weather. And then the top two floors were units for families, two-bedroom units and some studios for people that didn't have kids. And they finally built it. It took, it took about five years of first designating camps, then giving people places to park motorhomes, and put tents up, and none of it worked. So I think it's doable. I don't know, I know the $10 million figure was being kicked around, that's what I saw. And like I said, I don't have a total grasp on the situation. But you have to be careful about what you do. You want to make sure it works. I don't know if the town has enough support for people. I mean, you do have to give them a house, but there are also going to be more. Maybe getting a house first is the way to go because if they don't have a house, it's going to be really tough trying to help them get the rest of the way out. So that's all I had to say. I mean, I know there's a problem, I'd like to see something done. But be careful that Gold Beach doesn't become the only place. I think all the smaller towns like Brookings, which is larger, of course, they could definitely build something also. Port Hartford's a little small. The rest I'm just still not aware of. I just wanted to say my piece on that there was a problem, and I'd like to see something done that works for everybody. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item is action, or consent calendar, action ads, budget, security, or new ventures, and here in chat registers. Oh, wait a second. Mr. Cooper, did you have something to say during the public's comments?
No, I had an item, but I just like an email here about it being postponed until next month.
Yes. And then there's a person by the name of Jessie, and I'm sorry, I don't know your last name. Did you have something you wanted to say during comments? If you change your mind, Jessie, just type something in the chat or raise your hand, and I will address you later. Okay, back to the consent calendar. Any questions? Okay, if not, can I have a motion?
Actually, I think I do have a question. No, I apologize. Out of question, I think given that, page 105, is that part of it? There was just an acronym I didn't know. Page 105. That's still part of it, correct? No, that's the update. Never mind, that's the update. Go ahead.
Okay.
I will make a motion to accept the consent calendar, approve the consent calendar.
Okay, sorry, second?
I will second.
A motion to approve the consent calendar from Council Skinner, a second from Council McGilvery. McGilvery. Is there any discussion? All right, I'll call a question. Council Skinner.
Aye.
Council McGilvery.
Aye.
Council Madison. Council Bradley.
Aye.
Council Martinez.
Aye.
Perfect timing, 5 to 0, once again. Okay, next, update on the dangerous building, which is the candle.
Yes. So we did finally get the structural report from the engineer. Thank you, Mr. Pagano. He's been dogging them to get that, we were supposed to have it a month ago, and so he's been dogging them. But we finally got it. We sent that on to the attorney for their consideration. And then, Mayor, I wasn't sure what more we could say about it in the public media. So that was my update, is we did get the structural report. I think you had mentioned something about that, the possibility of if people wanted to see that, that they would just need to make the request for that, but I wasn't sure if that was. if, if that was.
Yeah, I think like the other report we had, if somebody makes a local purchase or best your attorney will probably, our attorney will probably say they have to release it. So it appears that we're not going to need. So we had an executive session where we told administration to move forward with legal counsel, but I don't think that that's going to be able to happen, so we probably need another executive session to get the other my signature.
And probably, yes, because now that we have the engineering report, I think probably the attorney needs to talk to all of you again and say, okay, now that we have this engineering report, this is what I recommend that you do. Because I honestly, I mean, I read the report, and I don't know, it seemed kind of conflicting to me. But, but she had a opinion about it, which it seemed conflicting to me, but so maybe it would be better for her. Maybe there's some legal thing that's different than what I'm looking at.
Yeah, the other attorney, attorney called the inspector, and they came up with that we can't move forward.
Okay.
So, so hard to talk about something that's not public. So the concerns I have, and after thinking about it a lot, I think maybe the asbestos company might be the best one to ask. What can we do to make the shingles not come off in the next door? Because I know that some of the councils were very concerned about the asbestos harming somebody. But if we just put boards up or just tarps up, it's going to look worse, and it's going to be harder to pull off. So maybe they would have a recommendation of how we can keep them down. If you, you and your, your so helpful staff could figure it out. Because I think we're going to have to probably next month make a decision to do that.
Okay.
Because we usually get storms by October, November.
Right, right. So I would recommend that we, we call Ms. Dorman and, and find out.
The closer you can get to us making a decision next month to do something.
Yes, yes.
The better.
So we'll get in touch with, with Ms. Dorman and, and ask her what she thinks about securing the roof.
If anybody would like to purchase that building, we will work with you and be kind to you. Help you with your planning permits.
We want to get rid of this dangerous building. So, so that's the, the news. And if, and if any of the counselors would like to read a copy of it, just let me know. So I can, I can forward, get back to you when I'll just forward it all to you.
Okay, anything else on that item?
Uh, no, I don't want anything unless you do.
I don't want to forget all I use.
Have we heard if there's been any more offers, anything?
Not that I've heard of.
Have you heard anything, offers?
I haven't heard anything. I'm not sure if it's even active anymore, is it?
It is.
Okay.
And I think Ms. Kennedy, who was listening, has actually taken care of some graffiti and some other damage that has been done, so. I talked to her about three weeks ago, and there was no change.
Okay.
Okay, then number nine is monthly update on the 2022 city elections.
Okay, so the, the filing period officially ended at 5:00 PM on August 30th. So there were a total of four candidates for the three spots available. Council position one, Summer Madison, incumbent, was the only successful filer. Council position three, Mr. Martinez, was the only successful filer filed by signatures. And then for Counselor McGilvery's, you gotta duke it out, I'm sorry. So, and I apologize because I misspelled your first name, I apologize for that. And there, there was one other person that filed for council position five, and that was Mr. Beer. So all of you will be on the ballot, and those usually go out mayor, like, is it like three or four weeks before the election, something like that? And so you all had put on your forms how you wanted your name to appear on the ballot, so that was sent over to the county clerk's office today.
I think you typed his name wrong also.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
I never.
Well, at least I was like, at least I, it wasn't just Valerie.
You were equal opportunity misspelled.
I was an equal opportunity misspelled, but I, I made sure I checked it for the, for the county.
All right, and next is the CA report.
Okay, so the, so the mayor, I wish many of you had known me pre-pandemic, because like the person that you know is not the person I was back then, so. I think we're all different now. So, you know, in the last two and a half years, things have been a little bit different. So the, the mayor had asked me at our, at our agenda meeting if maybe I could put together, she had specifically asked for building stats, you know, like how many, how many permits are we, have we issued, that type of thing. So I talked to Mr. Pagano, and he got the information from the county building permits program. We'll try to drill down, I didn't really have enough time this month to do it, we'll try to drill down a little bit more, because like the structures, it's like, were they garages, were they, you know, what were they? I just didn't have time to do that this month. But, so I thought, okay, well, the mayor asked for building stats, so I was starting to think like, what are stats? Well, we used to provide in my CA report, I would provide Ms. Whitmore's report from the police department, so that was included. I talked to Chief Krieger today, he's gonna start sending me a report so that we can have a thing in there about the callouts, number of callouts that the fire department has each month. And then he also gets a report each quarter from the fire marshal's office, so we'll, I'll include that as well. And then the, the TLT or the transient lodging tax, typically I give you that just like quarterly, but that, I had that stats also. So if there's anything that you can think of, I mean, just trying to think of like stats that maybe would be of interest to you. So if you can think of anything that you would like to know, like how many, I don't know, how many utility accounts open and close this month? Because that kind of talk, whenever there's activity in the utilities, that means, you know, houses are selling, things like that. So I don't know what you want to know, so you, you feel free to shoot me an email and say, this is what I want to know, and I'll see if we can find a stat. So, so I, that, this was my first stab at it, and if you have any questions about it, I would be happy to answer. And then Counselor Skinner, you said you had a question on the acronym.
No, she got it sitting straight. But on the page 108, this table.
Yes.
Is that visitor center data, or?
That includes, okay, so the, the foot traffic, foot traffic, phone calls, website visits, that has to do with the visitor center. The page views is our visitgoldbeach.com. Rainfall I get from the wastewater, Ron, sorry, Ron, the guy that runs our wastewater plan. Thank you. And the reason why I started tracking rainfall, I started that a couple of years back, because I wanted to see if there was a correlation between dips in occupancy during high rain events, and so that's why we started doing that. And then the motel, short-term rental, and then RV park. And I would, I would just caution and say that the motel occupancy is always pretty spot-on, the short-term rental and the RV park are kind of hit and miss on how they report. So I do the best I can, but take those two with a kind of a grain of salt, but the motel ones are always, they know how many rooms they sold, so. So, so there's historical data that I always include in there so that people can look back on it. I would caution folks that for 2020, 2021, and all of this year so far, because of the pandemic, these numbers are like, they need to be thrown out as far as like, you know, if we're going to average them out in a normal year, so to speak, yeah, the pandemic has like totally turned everything upside down, so. In a good way, in some respects. In other respects, it's like, okay, at some point, it's going to hit the wall, and we're going to go back to where in the wintertime, when the boats quit running, things bottom out. At some point, that's going to happen. And then the other, the, on page 111, and I realize it's super tiny, I'm sorry, but you know, you can make it bigger on your screen, but you can see on there the, the taxable rent and the amount of money that's come in, in the two and a half years of COVID is just insane. Okay, that's not going to continue forever, so, yeah.
They all fell in love with the place, they're going to come back.
Yeah, no, if, it really, in the beginning, when I saw the numbers really jacking up, which it's great that it happened, but if people knew, we, we had had a lodging tax in Gold Beach since 1982. Okay, so that's, that's what, 40 years, right? Yeah, I can't be macking my head that quickly. But if you knew how much money we spent over the years to try to lure people here, and really all I needed to tell them was stay at home, wow, okay. Yeah, so, so don't, yeah, those figures at some point are going to bottom out, so. And that's all I got.
I had a question on development permits. Is that calendar year?
What?
Development permits, is that calendar year?
That was, yes.
So, like, page 106, so like Chief White's applied for four new houses, right? But it's not showing in this.
Because we're under commercial, so we didn't put commercial in. We only did residential.
Because a lot of our residential is being built on commercial right now.
I think, that, okay, that's a good thing to know, too. Like I said, we can drill down on those figures, because I actually hadn't thought of that.
Most of our, our houses are being built on commercial property.
Although the new single-family dwellings, the 21 for 2021, that had to include Watsons, right? Okay, same deal, or his property's own commercial, so I'm not sure what the difference is. So it's how, it's how they figure it out.
Strange.
Native County?
Yeah, because we don't issue, we have our own planning department, but we don't have our own building department. So this, this data comes from their system.
My thought was if we could track this, then we would know year over year if what we're doing is paying off. And I, you know, we're probably going to hit a recession, which is going to affect the market, and it may slow things down, but at least we will know if any of our incentives hold, any of our zone changes hold, I think.
Because I know when I first looked at the 21 for 2021, I was like, what? And I was like, oh wait, that had to have been per drive. Because like, 21 permits in a year, yeah, that never happens. I would say again, that would be an anomaly. We don't issue 21 building permits in a year.
We're putting a lot of work into something that I want to know.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions on this?
I was looking at the data, and it came to mind, a conversation we had about letting people know what's going on in a whole small town, everybody wants to know what's going on. If there's some way the city can use the county's data to, I don't know, this is totally just in my head, this is probably like to you, like a map with like a link that you can click on, okay, so on this block, what is the permit they're doing, just so you know? People always want to know, so like, what's going on at that place down by the post office? What are they doing? Or what's going on? I don't know. If there's all public record, and we're working on making stuff, and we want people to be excited about development, maybe looking at what some other cities have done to inform people on what's going on.
And actually, we do frequently. Inquiring minds do want to know.
Yes, they do.
Because they'll call up and go, what's going on? So then we're like, well, you know, such and such, you know, they, they're building whatever, you know? But yeah, we, we get those calls all the time, 411 calls. So, so yeah, I mean, we could do like maybe a, a map or a chart or something, yeah.
Just along the same lines of like, if we're doing this, let's build a positive story around what we're doing, and help people become excited, not just for doing this. As we launch our campaign.
Anybody else? Okay.
With that, we will do council comments, and we'll start with Counselor Nelson.
The Prairie Historical Society is having an annex sale of relics, collectibles, and treasures, but everybody is more prone to come and party again Saturday, September 22nd, 9:00 AM, 4:00 PM. School's back in session, please slow down when you're on the one-on-one, watch out for these, these high schoolers that aren't paying attention. Please go 20 miles an hour. Childcare facilities, so I've got two graduates this coming week that are going to be eligible to run childcare facilities. And so I looked at a space last Friday, I think it's good for smaller childcare, but if anybody is friends with churches whose congregations have grown so small or shrunk in that they have big open space, and they want to support the community with donating or making available some space, I appreciate knowing who that is. Oh, so Natural Bridges and Sacred Beach, some of the accidents that we've been having there, ODOT, state parks, county, they're all working on safer access and parking, at least for this coming year, and then build it out from there, but do some initial work, so I don't see so much.
Secret Beach isn't a secret?
No, unfortunately.
I get, I, I, I start hyperventilating when I go to Brookings and see all the cars there.
I do, so. You know, bad press is not good for us with regards to tourism. Main Street Town Hall on September 12th, 5:00 PM, Prairie Public Library, hoping that maybe with the timing of some of our bigger projects, we are able to address the October meeting, reviewing some of the outcomes of the survey that they did, and maybe tie that into the priorities we have for renewal, and maybe discuss, there's a lot of contention in the public right now as to what the vision is for Gold Beach, and I think ultimately everybody's on the same page, they're just coming from different perspectives, so I'm hoping that maybe as city council, we can help pull that vision together, and maybe at least show them that we're taking a mission, not that we don't show them that, but, but that we're paying attention. Manaus Bar, so we had a Chevy truck commercial scheduled there, probably 28th, 29th, and the 31st of August, and come to find out, did I already share this with you guys? There was a huge transient camp there, and there was garbage in the creek, and tons of garbage in the creek. There was soiled materials in this little tiny pond of three frogs, and so, you know, trying to find them positive about it, everything, I think that it just pushes for more motivation for environmental recreation stewardship, and how we can incentivize that, and how we can take the initiative in, in modeling that, and maybe coming up with some strategic ways where we can add to the services we have for parks without having to necessarily staff those, those avenues, at least within the city limits. I think that's all I've got. Yeah, that's all I have.
Counselor Bradley?
Met with Anna Marie Curis and Mayor Kaufman today. Yeah, we was kind of showing what you've been working on, wanting to get the main street back about, how might you help us? Anna Marie was showing us their budget, had discussions about where, where we renew and Gold Beach Main Street may have some intermeshed ideas. And Anna Marie is going to bring more of that to us to get, kind of get everybody on board to see what they're working on, and get the committees together, council down. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Martinez?
Well, as Counselor Madison mentioned, today was the first day of school. Do appreciate that public service announcement, advising people to please obey the that public service announcement, advising people to please obey the traffic laws, and go slow when the flashing lights are blinking through the school zones. Also, I started a new job as the Spanish teacher for the high school today, and my first initial impression of the youth of today, I'm very happy to report, we have some brilliant minds in our schools today. It's certainly an honor to be part of the staff, and to be part of this great student body. And I also want to personally thank Commissioner Skinner for her help in helping me prepare for my first day today, going on really well, so thank you, councillor Skinner. And yes, please, everyone, please watch out for kids, they're all over the place, and their minds are buzzing, and so they may not notice cars, but I appreciate you noticing them. Thank you.
Councillor Skinner.
Well, today was the second week of school for my former school district, but I did want to jump on the back-to-school conversation, as we're looking at paying attention as a community to supporting our students, their teachers and administrators, and families with kids in school, no matter who we are in our community, I think the more community support we have, the better our schools are gonna be. So in whatever way people can reach out and support, I highly, highly encourage that. And thank you for letting me help set up your classroom so I got that door open as I transition away. I wanted to, my glasses on. Oh, I wanted to talk about this just briefly, I was invited to attend the Crystal River Friendship Hall Tuesday breakfast, I'm like, how cool is that? I talk a lot, and we've talked a lot about building conversations, that they just host, the people on Crystal River host a breakfast every Tuesday at nine, and they just get together and eat and visit, and I thought that was amazing, and I know we have the community center launches here, I was thinking I might just put that on my weekly schedule to go break bread. I just love seeing that, because I think that's really where we're going to come to moving our community forward, is when we're having conversations with each other, and getting to know people. One other piece I wanted to talk about, one was the Ford Family Foundation Select Book Program, if people aren't aware of that, the Ford Family Foundation based out of Roseburg, based on the, from the founders of the Roseburg Forest Products, they have a program available to all Oregonians, where you can sign up for a selection of books, and you can just get one sent to you, paid for by the foundation completely, and you read it, share it, you write a really short little thing, and then you can order another one. And they have a huge list for kids and adults, it's just a great program, especially since we're in a limited area with books for people to have, going back to supporting kids, right? Having books in your house is a really important thing. To one of my favorite book places, the library, drive-in movies, we have three more in September, and they're getting earlier, so if you'd like to go to bed early, I think Saturday the movie started at 8:15, so it's just gonna kick in earlier, so check out the library website for that. And then Rotary is hosting the bike, the Rogue event this Saturday, and then there's an extension of high-intensity like mountain biking adventure ride on Sunday, I don't know what it's actually called, but it's for real big adventurers, and that's on Sunday. And then the last thing, which I'm trying to say every month, and I forgot last month, I'm really wanting to promote as a community, throughout all people in our community, the idea of conserving electricity, that came up when we were talking about offshore wind, and I think we've really gotten away from conserving electricity, and I just am ready to make a little like viable thing to put on stickers on people's life switches, but not quite ready, but maybe I'll make one at the library in the tech lab.
Councillor McGilvrayes, are Craig on them?
There is, and I will make shameless plug in a moment, but I wanted to start with the event center. The event center will be holding a fall festival in October, and they also, I think they're talking in terms of a haunted house, Allen's Theatre Company definitely is going to be doing a haunted house, and will be doing that the last two weekends of October. And it'd be a lot of fun, actually a haunted theater, and everybody has said that that theater is haunted, so now we're going to prove that it is. Back at the event center, they also are playing the Holiday Bazaar again, and it's nice, we have not had that for a few years, that's going on. And more and more, Caitlin's goal is to partner with the community to open up the event center for community events, so I think we've moved forward to seeing a lot, I think we're definitely at the fair meeting tonight, but I'm there today. So I'll go next time and see what we're standing with all the things that are going on. And shamelessly, I'm looking for Allen's Theatre Company's current show.
You do it in character.
Which character? I got two of them too. Well, for one of them, the show goes this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday matinee at 2:00, and the following weekend, Friday, Saturday, at 7:30, show, matinee at 2:00. It is, lack out loud, funny, and that's all it's for. And since you want something in character, I do many hits, and I approve this message.
Okay, I guess I'm up next. The first thing I want to do is mention that I went to the Oregon Mayors Association, right after our council meeting, I got COVID, and I got low enough that I was able to go, and then I got sick while I was there, it was kind of weird. So I came home and had to take more meds, but I learned something that was really, really important that I had forgotten, I think I might have known it before, which you can't get ahead of your staff, and you can't get ahead of your council. As a leader of the city, you gotta be careful, and when it came to the urban campground, I was light years ahead of everybody, and I apologize for that. And so I was asked by a couple of councillors to slow down and give everybody a chance to catch up before the postcard came out of a project here, which had nothing to do with the campground we were talking about. So I graciously agreed that, yes, we'll slow down and make sure everybody gets caught up. And then thankfully, the League of Oregon Cities recognizes that this is a huge issue for everybody, because we have these federal mandates and state mandates to deal with places that have a kind of a place of matter. I believe that councillor Skinner's already said that she's gonna go to the one of the workshops that the League of Oregon Cities is putting on, but there's also one in September 12th in Redmond, September 19th in Hermiston, October 17th in Newport, and October 24th in Cottage Grove. There'll also be something at the League of Oregon Cities Conference, which is right after our next council meeting in October. I think there's at least four of us coming, I think, I think you could probably still sign up if you haven't, and hopefully we'll learn a lot more there as well. And then when we finish the housing action plan, then I would like to work with the library to host a town hall. And I'm working with Meredith Howell, some of you know who that is, she's really good at helping set up a good meeting and facilitating, so that we can hear what everybody has to say, what the public has, the comments people have, but also share what our problem is, and let the community help us come up with, understanding the problem, and then what are the possible solutions. After talking with a little bit of work group and then talking with staff, we're probably gonna need two town halls, it's just that complex. But the good news is the state part doesn't happen until July 1, I think, so we've got a little time to work on it, we don't have to be in a rush. So I would appreciate your accepting my apology and forgiving me, and we'll work forward. And if everything goes right, we're gonna have the best town hall meeting anywhere, and they'll just start mimicking what we did, because we're gonna do such a great job. How's that proudness of? And yes, Chief White, you are on the intro of that. So the next thing I want to talk about was, the Urban Renewal Agency came up with a priority list, and Leonard Pagano put that together, and it's really hard to know what exactly the Urban Renewal Agency wants as high priority, so I was gonna ask if it's okay with you guys, and question to Chair, if Mr. Pagano sent you all an email and said, prioritize this, I think there's six of them now, in, you know, most important order, and then maybe we could get a better idea of what really we should be focusing on.
Because the, the chart that we came up with after last time was like four things tied for the same, so it's like, obviously, they're probably not all exactly equal, but they all tied, so, yeah.
So if we could just get a better idea, then I would know what I'm supposed to be helping with, or better, that's not the right word, I think it's better is the word, have a better idea of what, what I should be helping focus on, even though I'm not part of the Urban Renewal. And then, I talked about all those things, was there anything else that you want to talk about here?
You're asking me, the one?
Yeah, I'm asking you, because I'm okay.
Oh, I know, you, I love, you talked about the presentation you gave on housing at the League of Oregon Cities.
Oh, yeah, that was fun.
Regional meeting.
So councillor Skinner tagged right up to Coquille, and the Small Cities, League of Oregon Cities meeting, Region 6, asked if we would give a presentation on what we've been doing for housing. And so staff, thankfully, while I was sick, created a really great packet of what we've been doing, and you know, from 2017, it's amazing how much we've gotten done, and from starting with accessory dwelling units and the tiny homes, to the housing needs analysis, the building step, available land survey, then we got into the short-term rental ordinance, and now we're doing this, implementing the housing thing, it's just like amazing how much work we've really done when you start looking at it back, and everybody took it really well, and even though it was for small cities, they invited everybody, so we even had Keith Bay in Redmond there. And so it went really well, I think, yeah, and councillor Skinner.
She needs to flip, I do, guys, we're lucky to have Mayor Kaufman as a leader.
I liked the mayor of Coquille, he's fairly new, and he's really upbeat and positive. He would get along with me and Chief White.
The mayor emailed me after the meeting and said, he's a Pollyanna like me, you know.
Yeah, they asked him to replace a mayor, and he goes, it's not a negative ordinance, it's, it's people now know where they can be.
Maybe he said it was the, yeah.
People have to know the parameters, and he was just so.
That they're not, they're not, yeah.
It was hilarious, so, and councillor Skinner got to meet Hui, who was our D L C D rep, and they had a good chat, and he made her feel comfortable, which was really cool, and so it's never hurt to have people in those positions on our side, so.
I was meeting the Newport meeting, but you're a good meeting to go to.
Yeah, because that's where she's at.
Yeah, I thought maybe that, on both meetings.
And with that, if there's something else, then motion to adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn at 8:16.
Okay, we have motion of second on the floor, we'll call for the questions. Councillor Skinner.
Hi.
Councillor McGilvrayes.
Hi.
Councillor Madison.
Aye.
Councillor Rappi.
Aye.
Councillor Martinez.
Aye.